Happy New Year. Before we begin, could I just ask everyone to silence their cell phones if they have not done so already? And we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...............................................................
Okay, so we only have one resolution this morning, so we'll start with that. Adopt Resolution Number 01-2020 to accept and acknowledge the gift of eighty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents from Ronald S. Lauder towards the Dominique Shop Restoration Project.
So moved.
Second.
The second in all in favor?
Aye.
None? Excuse me, opposed? None? So carried. All right, so I don't see.
No, he's not here yet.
All right, so we're expecting somebody else to make the presentation and reference the Village logo. I'll give them a few more minutes. So next up is the capital plan. Becky?
As you're aware, the Village is required to adopt a five-year capital plan, and the current plan expires on July 31st, 2020. So you have before you a new draft plan that will, would take effect August 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2025. So just to do a quick overview, the current capital plan had a total project amount of just over seven million dollars. The new draft capital plan is just under twelve million dollars, so that's a difference of approximately four-point-nine million dollars. So in reviewing the current capital year plan, the Village has actually accomplished a number of projects that were on that plan, from the roundabout at Route 114 and Buell and Toilsome Lane, the annual road resurfacing that the Village does, which you'll notice that that's not in the current five-year plan. I did remove it because that has become an annual appropriation anyway in the operating budget. So just moving forward, I just changed the layout and the format of it. Like I said, since that's become an annual appropriation, I just haven't included it in the five-year plan because it does get the annual funding anyway from the Village Board. The Police Department, Code Enforcement have continued replacing vehicles on a cyclical basis as they age out. You've also, for emergency services, made some large purchases for both the ambulance and the fire department over the last few years, in addition to a wall partition addition in the jail here at the Emergency Services Building, also upgrading the air rescue packs for the fire department as well. So moving to the new draft plan, it's a lot of the same, as it includes things such as not just infrastructure but equipment as well. You know, a lot of it is self-explanatory. Each department sends to me a request of the items that they would like for the long-term planning for the Village's capital plan. This is a guideline that the departments use when developing their annual budgets for the Village Board to consider. It's not set in stone. It is subject to changes, amendments, and the prices obviously are estimates, as you know, these projects have not gone out to bid. So if you review, I also include this as a proposed funding source for each purchase. Again, that is also subject to change. A lot of the times, grant opportunities will present themselves that, you know, the Village was not aware of at the time the plan was adopted. So again, each funding source is identified. I also added this year, normally the funding source GF refers to general fund, but I also included RF for one of your reserve funds as well.
Okay. Thank you, Becky. Anybody with any comments?
I have just a quick question. I know we'll get more details later, but I see that we're talking about relocating the entrance to this building. What is the thought on that?
Ken?
Mike.
Maybe Mike wants to add something when you're finished.
Sure. Good morning, members of the board. We've noticed over the past few years, when we did that relocation of the main entrance to the rear of the building, it's now become very confusing for people to find their way from the back of the building and the myriad of signs where you can and can't park, and the address being One Cedar Street, and trying to get them to dispatch to get paperwork that they need. And I know the board is concerned about actually having a physical presence of a person there to receive the people coming into the building. So the chief and I were looking at ideas of making that entrance more user-friendly, actually physically at the address of One Cedar Street, where our handicap parking space, our access to the elevator. We've had to add security doors to the building because of different things that have evolved in our society, and we're trying to make it easier for the public to get in, get the information they need without them feeling like...
They need to wander around the building.
Yeah, we've had, we've had several folks up here wandering around upstairs and really confused and lost. And, you know, if you're coming to a building as imposing as this, sometimes it's, you know, daunting, and then to get them where they need to be. So we have a few ideas, and Becky asked us to put that money into the capital fund to see if it was something that we could achieve. You know, of course, with the board's blessing on it, but we just feel that we can make this building a little more user-friendly for the people that come here daily to, you know, get an accident report, ask police information, or, you know, different things like that.
Great.
Okay. So at the appropriate time, we'll get a plan?
Yes, we will, yeah.
And so you're talking about making the main entrance to the building in the front where dispatch currently is through those doors?
Correct, putting it back to where it was originally, yeah. Because right now, it says One Cedar Street, and if you read the little print down below, it says "main entrance at rear building." And we do have people sometimes circling the building, trying to figure out how to get in.
It is confusing, I agree.
It is, it is.
And we have parking over there for people like, you know, this crowd today. They would park then out front?
No, they could still park in the back.
Still park here and then they'd walk?
They would still be able to enter the building this way, but from the day-to-day, the idea is to really secure that back door. That back door should really be secure. And people coming in daily, you know, for accident reports and those things, they're actually going to dispatch anyway to get that help. And making them kind of follow a green line through a door, it's very confusing. And we find people upstairs here, and we find them sometimes, you know, in other areas of the building. If the truck bays are open, we'll find them wandering on the truck bays and, you know, trying to get them where they need to go is, you know, is, I think, is important.
I agree, it's a bit awkward.
And our address is One Cedar Street. So they do pull up there, and then they're, okay, where do we go? So, yeah, that's it.
That was one of my questions too, Barbara.
Chief, do you have anything to add, or that pretty much?
One of the things that we had looked at, aside from the back door, the disadvantages of the back door and the access to this back wing that people are able, were able to go to, we secured that door. But again, you have the elevator and an open hallway to the front. So if somebody comes in ostensibly to talk to dispatch, and they walk right by and they hit the elevator, they have access to this room, perhaps at times when we don't want them to be up here. So this room is a public room, public meetings and so forth, but the doors to this facility are not unlocked all the time so that you can get up here. However, the problem is with the front. It actually is accessible. We can lock those front doors at night, but, and the other issue that we both spoke about, when you come into this building and you go to address someone in dispatch, you're talking up to them like this, which is not very user-friendly. And I have found you can't even see who it is you're talking to up there. The glasses, safety glass, obviously, there's some metal in there for safety, but it's really not, it's really not efficient, and I just don't think it's the message we want to send, is that, you know, you can't speak to somebody that you can see. So one of the other things we were talking about is there's a room downstairs, which is currently used as a UPS room. We would reclaim that room and make that into some sort of office, very much like the towns. When you walk into the town, there's dispatch at a window, but there's also a person there at your level you can see. They're behind safety glass, it's secure and so forth. But during business hours, there's someone there you can interact with, you can look them in the face, they can grab reports for you and all of that. Ideally, we would have that manned, reclaim it, refurbish it with a glass corner, and then it would be on this side of a new door we would install, just short of the elevators. On meeting days, that door would be open, perhaps magnetically, so that people could access the elevator and the stairs. And on off-hours, we want to secure it, that door just shuts, and, you know, it secures the facility, but also makes it more user-friendly for the public.
Would that be a new position? The person?
I don't think it has to be.
Or would it be existing dispatch staff?
It would depend. There, I know there's some things in plans and, you know, moving forward, I think we haven't, we haven't spoke about staffing, but it doesn't have to be. But again, we can talk about that, you know, whenever the board feels comfortable. And between Kenny and I, I'm sure we can come up with some suggestions, and perhaps maybe even with EMS and fire, support personnel, administrative assistance, maybe we could do some shared services there with other departments and make it a little more affordable that way.
Great.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this?
No, it sounds great.
No, it looks good. I noticed as well that Herrick Park had allocated money towards it each year, except for, let's say in 2020 and 2021 fiscal year, but not in the 2021, 2022 year, but yet, again, in 2022, 2023, '24 and '25. Is that? I was just wondering why.
No specific reason. I think just because the plan has not been finalized, so not without knowing exactly how the board yet wants to stagger the project and the entire plan. That's why there's not in every single year. But again, as I've told you, that the board, you know, can adopt, change the plan, and just because a project is in there doesn't mean the board can't do it, so.
Correct. Okay, that's great.
And I just want to stress, Herrick Park is a priority, so just because there are no, there's no funding for that year, doesn't mean that...
Yeah, no, I, thank you.
All right?
Appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I think it looks good. I know DPW has asked for a garbage truck a couple of years back, and again, it's on the, on the list, as well as the sweeper, so I think those two things are a priority. I mean, we use them, you know, daily, and the other piece of equipment, at least two to three times a week, the sweeper, so I'm hoping that will also be accomplished in the next plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Becky, I appreciate that. I still don't see Scott here, so we'll move on to the next item, vacancy in the mayoral position. I want to read this into the record, which is Village Law, which applies to that. Pursuant to Village Law 4-400, "When the mayor is absent or unable to fulfill his or her duties as mayor, the deputy village mayor is vested with all of the powers and may perform all of the duties of the mayor. If the mayor's office becomes vacant, the deputy mayor does not automatically become mayor. Rather, the deputy mayor performs the duties and functions of the mayor until the Board of Trustees fills the vacancy in the office of the mayor. The deputy mayor does not become the acting mayor or the temporary mayor. Although Village Law 4-400 subsection 1H vests the deputy mayor with the powers and duties of the mayor in the event the mayor is unavailable to serve, there is constant confusion as to the extent of the deputy mayor's power and for how long the deputy mayor can serve in the event that there is a vacancy in the office of the mayor. The Office of the Attorney General has opined that if a vacancy is created in the office of the village mayor, the deputy mayor may only exercise the powers of the mayor until the next meeting of the Village Board of Trustees." Now, I want to also say that there are legal minds that disagree with that because there is nothing specific in Village Law which addresses that. I would say that I would err on the side of caution here, and I would be in favor of appointing a mayor, since there is such a long timeframe between Mayor Rick and back stepping down and until the election. So it would be my preference that we appoint one of us as mayor. I don't know how everybody else feels. Tiger, what's your?
Yeah, I think it's important that we have a mayor, because when you have a mayor, you also have a deputy mayor that can serve in the mayor's absence. So if we were to appoint a mayor today and a deputy mayor today, then we have two executive positions that will be in place so the village is properly served. I think that by just having it all hang on the deputy mayor is a disservice to the village.
Barbara?
And I am in favor of that appointment.
Barbara?
Well, I do think it's a long time, and we have six months ahead of us, so I think we need to think in terms of what's best for the residents. We need to serve the residents. That's, that's what our charge is. So I have no problem with, with appointing a mayor. I think it's probably in the best interest of the village.
Okay. Rose?
I think you're right, that since it's elusive as to whether the deputy mayor can serve for an extended period of time, I think that we would, it'd be more cautious to appoint a mayor. I agree with that. The decision then for us as well, if there's a vacancy then as a trustee, whether we would fill that spot, or if we should wait until the election in June and, you know, let the people decide at that point.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody that obviously the mayor is vested with more power than the trustees are, and if we just have a deputy mayor position, fulfilling mayor obligations, and for some reason, the deputy mayor, myself, were not available, that would complicate issues as far as signing certain checks, which only the mayor and the deputy mayor have authority to do, and certain other legal aspects of day-to-day activity in the government. So I think at best, and I think the people of the village are best served by us appointing a mayor and then appointing a deputy mayor as well. So that's my feeling on it. And what I would like to do, since we've resolved that we will appoint the mayor, I'd like to have us consider it for the next two weeks and make that appointment at our next meeting, I think it's January 17th? Is that right, Becky? I think, okay. So that's what I would like to do. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Sure. It works.
Okay, fine. So Barbara?
Do you want to go on to?
Yeah, we, we should move on to the last item, which is the presentation of the new Village logo.
Okay.
And since Barbara's on the Centennial Committee, I'm going to turn it over to her.
I think it was about, maybe a year and a half ago, Rose probably remembers it as well as I do. I went to the mayor and I said, "I don't know if you realize this or not, but next year, in 2020," or it would be, yeah, in 2020, it wasn't next year, "but we'll be celebrating the centennial of the Village's incorporation," which was in 1920. So I said, "It would be really nice to do some celebrations that year and, you know, remind everybody of where the village has come from and, and what the history of the village is." So he agreed that that was a great idea, and the other thing that we spoke about was possibly designing a new seal for the celebration. So this is the seal. We asked Scott Bluedorn, who's a very talented local artist, to do it, and I'm going to show it to you now. I was hoping he would be here. He said he was going to be here so that he could explain the symbolism in it, but I think it's, it's a beautiful piece of artwork, and I'm excited to show it to you. So clearly, that's Hook Mill and the ocean, which of course, we're so proud of our beautiful beaches in the village, and the seagull, and I really think it's beautiful. I'm very pleased with it. So we want to invite everybody this afternoon. At 2:00, we're going to be raising the flag at Village Hall. This flag will be raised at Village Hall for the, for the celebration year, and we'll have a small open house at Village Hall between 2:00 and 4:00. So anybody who wants to come by, we'd love to see you and have you come celebrate with us this afternoon.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate it. I hope that you'll all join us this afternoon. Okay, that is the end of our agenda. Does anybody like to address the board? Wait just one minute until they finish with the picture. Okay?
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Everyone.
Happy New Year.
I'm Charlie Whitmore. I came with, I think, good news. Not here to complain. Anyway, I came here to commend the, the Village Board for hiring a landscape architect, the Chris LaGuardia Group, to re, for the redesign of Herrick Park. The selection of such a reputable designer for Herrick, I hope, sets a new standard for the design of our public places in the town of East Hampton. It's important because of the limited park space that we do have. And what I really found encouraging with Chris and his group is that they engage in a process where of feedback from the community, they put out a preliminary plan, then everyone gets to comment on the plan, and so on and so forth. And it's really important to have a process in place to come up with a good design. And so once again, I want to congratulate you for that. And in a town that has so many great landscapers, landscape contractors, and landscape designers, it's very important in East Hampton because it's, it is the country's most beautiful village, as it's advertised. And there are some very, very talented people, and I hope that everyone can embrace this process. I just wanted to say a few things. I have been involved in Herrick Park for over 50 years, and starting with football under Coach Gary Golden, the two of yous are here today that I recognize, Jimmy Brooks and you, Rick. And it's very important, I found it very, very important that we keep an eye on Herrick. And I want to share with you a little story because I saw the paper, the letter in the paper regarding someone desiring to put a, what is it, a driveway through the park?
Roadway.
So they could get to the parking. Well, many years ago, I got together with Coach Cooney, this, and I'm, someone could probably tell me when this was, but Larry could probably tell you better than myself. But we got together because Herrick Park, of course, bears a tremendous amount of recre, you know, recreation on it, and the fields are getting kind of worn down. And so Coach Cooney called me, and then, of course, we got together with Larry. And at the time, and Rick would remember, Jimmy would remember, the practice fields were up where the parking lot is now. So as we walked around the fields, we decided, I thought we decided, anyway, they said we decided, that that would be the best place for new fields. Put additional fields, it takes some of the stress off of the, off the park. Well, time passed, a couple of years went by. This goes back to the 70s or early 80s, I'm believing. But time went by, and one day, of course, the parking lot appeared there instead of fields. And so sometime after they completed the construction of the parking lots, I got a phone call one day from one of my teammates who said, "Charlie, you got to get down here." So I raced down to the park, and there was a local contractor had taken a bulldozer and left the, a parking, the new parking lot, and was, had rounded the baseball backstop there, and had lowered the bucket, and was headed diagonally across Herrick to the opening in the fence on the other side. You all know who it is, I won't mention the name. So I raced out onto the field and said, "Hey, what do you think you're doing?" And of course, he was pretty irritated because he said, "I was contracted to do this work." So it took several of us to stop him, and then there were calls to the LVIS, and I called Larry, Larry, and I called Coach, and we convened down at the park, and we agreed this was not a good idea. And so what we had to do was redesign the walkway from the parking lot. That's why it's along the perimeter, not diagonally across the center of the park. So I think, I tell you that story, and there's one about the lights too, they put the light on the 20, 20-yard line, but I won't get into all the other stories. I tell you that story because I just think there's a tremendous amount of pressure in that park to be something else, and that it deserves everyone's attention. And I just wanted to tell you that today. So, so far, so good. I certainly want to be involved further with the park and the planning of the park, and I have contacted the architects to give my feedback, and hopefully, it'll turn out to be what it should be, which is one of the premier parks in the town of East Hampton.
That is our goal.
Right, sure.
And I thank you for your comments. And I can assure you, the pathway that we're talking about, you know, we, will be a direct route, we were hoping, from Rude Shan to the long-term lot, so that people could utilize it better. And just to give you a little backstory about how the pathway, where it is delineated now in the conceptual plan, plan has come to where it is, it, our engineer Drew Bennett looked at the tennis courts, and it was deemed that they were in poor condition, and the base of them was compromised. So we really kind of have to start over with the tennis courts. So at that point, we said to ourselves, "Are they in the most ideal location?" And so then we decided to flip-flop the tennis courts with the softball field. And in doing so, that creates a really direct route, you know, a pathway for pedestrians and so forth, to go from the Rude Shan lot to the long-term lot, and hopefully, people will utilize it more. So I just thought I'd let you know a little bit about that.
I did view the plan online. I don't know, is there a larger plan somewhere where I can?
We can give you a copy. We have copies. I'd like to hear your input for sure.
Right, and that's, and that's the important thing that I want to say, that the, the park really ta, because, let me be blunt, the town has not done its job regarding recreation, in my opinion, so that Herrick continues to bear this unnecessary burden. And the park is very resilient, and it's great, and it's all, it's worked out thus far, but it's important to understand the uses that are on it now and how they relate to the new plan. I looked at it briefly, and I looked as best I could online. I would like to see a larger drawing.
Sure.
And I will give them my feedback, and certainly, if there are any meetings, how would I find out if the?
If you want to, well, my email is online, if you'd like to contact me, or you can call Village Hall, and Becky can give you a copy of the plan for sure, from LaGuardia.
Right. Are you having further meetings on that?
Yes, we will, and we will have more public meetings as well. We'll add you to the list, so you can come and give your input. We had one in December on the 7th, and we're planning on having another one again.
You had one on the 7th? Yes, right, I missed that one. I, I'm a little bit late to these things because I've been very busy, but I would like to be there. So I contact you, and that, and then that way, I would be on the list.
Sure, we'll, we'll make sure you're included in the list, and LaGuardia will come back to us. They're incorporating a lot of the feedback that they received in the last couple of weeks, and we expect them to come back to us, I think, mid-February with the next plan.
Okay.
And anything will be in the paper too, or the public notice will be in the paper, and also, usually there's an article about it if we're doing a public meeting like that.
Right. I have been keeping abreast.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one of the other things that is in the LaGuardia Plan is a soil sample, so they can determine whether the fields are up to the use they get. As you say, it is heavily used, and we want to make sure that the turf is in proper condition for the use that it gets.
It's interesting. Just as, I'll tell you another story, a little quickly. I was concerned about compaction on the field. This goes back another 20-some years. So what I did was, I located a soil engineering firm, and I took samples by pounding PVC into the ground. So I had tubes of, in the center of the field or various places on the field, and I sent them to this company, and, and I said, "Yeah, this has got to be compacted," you know. So, and they, they sent me back the results, and shocked to learn, it was not compacted. This, interestingly enough, the soil is very, very resilient. Now, you can wear the, the turf was worn off of it due to overuse, but the soil itself was excellent and resilient. Now, that may still not be the case, or it may still not be the ca, or isn't the case, but, but once again, you could take those samples to find out. However, when you redo a such, a field like that, and this is why a good plan is so important, and then the implementation, the next step, is critical, because you're going most likely grade, regrade that soil, or reapply new soils, maybe engineered soils, and at that point, as in most landscapes, that's when the wheels fall off, because the soil is not, that's natural occurring soil, that's been there for centuries, obviously. And anything additional you put onto it is going to be entirely different. And just, it's very important to do it right.
Right. We also think that we might do, and while this is certainly not decided and hasn't been fully discussed with anyone, that we might do golf course-type maintenance on that field, where they do the fill and drill and, you know, take cores out.
Right.
To make the soil more resilient.
Right, they core it, and they do, do whatever. Yeah, and that's intensive, right? So that's the challenge to that, because then it becomes expensive. And I think if the goal is to keep perfect, or let's not say perfect, to keep really good turf on that field, or on that park, which is certainly a good goal to have... good turf on that field or on that park, which is certainly a good goal to have, and I shouldn't say this, but you know, you have, it's always best to spread use around. And that's why I say, and I'm a little frustrated with the town, because it's difficult to spread use around because there's so many user groups involved, and there's no creation of new places to take the pressure.
It is heavily used, for sure.
Right. But I have to say, it, you know, it doesn't puddle up, it, it's very resilient and no one's complaining about it. But if, but if that's your goal, well, we can discuss it further later on, but yeah, it's, it's, it's a much more complicated than it seems, but, but if done right, you can, it can service the community for, for decades more to come.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. I just want to remind you, you can give your email to Becky or Rose or any one of us so you be put on a list for notifications.
Yeah, okay.
And you can contact any one of us, just go on the village website, we all have our emails on there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to address the board?
Jerry Larson, obviously I'm a candidate for mayor for the village of East Hampton, and I'm just here to talk about your conversation about appointing a mayor. Barbara and I both announced our candidacy in June, so I would say, and since the mayor has set, you know, has resigned six months prior to his term, it hasn't really, it's not a retirement, it's a resignation, and he said in October he did this in order to, to set up the village board and created a vacancy. So I find it offensive that the board, if it decides to go this way, would appoint Barbara as the acting mayor. I think personally that Rick Lawler is capable, and he could be appointed the mayor, which would keep the playing field level. And I certainly don't think Ray Harden should be appointed to the open trustee seat at this point. I think we should let the village voters decide what's fair and have it an equal playing field for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay, so we're going to adjourn and go into executive session to discuss litigation. If for any reason we need to reconvene, we'll notify the media. Do I have a?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like photographs, we'll stay around.
Sure.
Oh, sure. Okay. You know what? Can we, we can adjourn?
Adjourn the meeting, yeah.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, we're adjourned.
[inaudible][1734.42]